Okay. Okay, look, look at the top of that.
I fell asleep for a minute.
I thought I was picking up the thing to do.
Say, who are we?
I fell asleep for about seven minutes.
Who we missing? Oh, Fairs.
I thought I was picking up the thing to do.
I got six o'clock. I got six o'clock.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting, August the fifteenth, twenty nineteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Wilson?
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, how thankful we are for this day. We're thankful for our city. We're thankful for those who have an interest in the making this city the best it can be. For those of us on the council, we pray for your wisdom and your guidance. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with one amendment that I have, and that is to add an executive session. Is there, are there any other items that need to be added, amended? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to the executive session.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Yon made the motion. Bill seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Guest to visitors, life-saving award. Chief Mitchell?
Like last month, I'm gonna go ahead and, if it's okay, do the crime report and then do the recognitions. Calls for service for the month of July. Our officers answered twenty-one hundred and fifty-seven calls for service. We had ninety-two arrests. And, I'm gonna copy there, we had four-hundred-and-twelve contacts, traffic stops. Areas concerned, shoplifting, five cases there. You move down to theft by taking, shows the location of other five cases and twelve cases with no connection across the, with, across the city. Accidents, glad to report our accidents were down, up for the month at eighty-four. And then our, our special operations officers worked a traffic, traffic enforcement based on just the contributing factors of our accidents yesterday. And that was very, very successful. Upcoming community events, we have bust out with a cop, which we did the thirteenth, which was Tuesday. Rob and roll call was also this past Tuesday. Our Facebook Live program will be Thursday, August twenty-second at six. And then coffee with a cop that following Friday evening, the twenty-third, and then at Starbucks on Riverstone. And then we'll have our Police in the Park event and our five K on Saturday, October fifth. And we'll be marketing that as we go over the next month. We had a hundred runners last year, and we're trying to double that this year, so vendors and everything there. Canton Ice House, our ongoing investigation, the search warrants, and then the Great Sky and River Green arrest, as far as enter and autos, that investigation is ongoing as well. As far as the monthly uniform crime report, just a few of the numbers and statistics from year-to-date, month-to-date for July, our total property crimes, right now, happy report year-to-month, are down fourteen, fourteen-point-eight percent for the years, twenty-seven-point-ten, point-point-one-zero percent. Our shop liftings are down considerably, and then our total part-one crimes, total overall crime at this point is down a little over twenty percent, so. Anyone have any questions on any of the?
Anyone?
Data?
Okay. Okay.
I'll do the recognition.
Thank you.
As you know, I believe it's really important to recognize the hard-working men and women that serve at the department. If I can have Corporal Adam Yurkovsky step forward, please. And as he walks up, he is receiving a life-saving award tonight for his acts on June eleventh, June eleventh, twenty nineteen, just at nine forty-nine P.M. And I give you a brief summary. We respond, Officer Yurkovsky responded to the Race Deck Gas Station racetrack located in nine-six-six-five Bronx Bridge Highway in reference to a male that was unconscious and lying on the floor in the store. Upon arrival, he realized that, he found the male and began CPR at that point until EMS and fire were arrived on scene. During his assessment, when EMS arrived, it was discovered that appeared the male, who was not, still not breathing at the time, was suffering from a possible drug overdose. Narcan issued, Narcan that he has, it's issued from our department, a medicine that reverses the effects of an overdose. More importantly, an opiate overdose was deployed, and appears at this time the male survived. Our rewards board took a, took a look at that and review of all documentation, the body cam, and the department feels if it weren't, were not for the quick actions and thinking of Corporal Yurkovsky, that male could have perished. But congratulations, sir, and as we always say, you truly exemplifying that incident and every day what you do is the attitude and mindset and heart that you have for our city, so thank you. Sir. Next, if I can have Detective Kyle Smith step forward, and I'll go ahead and have Officer Tanya Cruz step forward, please. We really believe it's important and have recognized our employees in the past for obtaining or for their training achievements and education achievements, because again, we really feel like a well-trained, professional, educated officer makes a professional department that serves our community. And Detective Smith, we just want to recognize him for recently obtaining his bachelor's degree from Georgia Southern University. And while I was in the room, there's, you see the others in the back there, they're with him, there's four, there are four GSE graduates in here, so. But congratulations Detective Smith. This is an awesome achievement, not only helps your professional development, but also came with a pay incentive from, from the department. Officer Tanya Cruz, she just finished again, just the training, and it's good to see our young officers now, and that have not been at the agency very long, obtaining these certifications through the state of Georgia. She just obtained her intermediate law enforcement certification, again, improving her, her career development, but also a pay incentive. She engaged in topics of criminal justice, health and wellness, interpersonal communications, emergency medical responder, and officer survival, a total of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight hours of training, which is not easy to get through, through the state, so. But congratulations on that, and we just wanted to recognize these two for these really good achievements, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations, everyone. I say it most meetings, but we are extremely proud of our police department, and I really can't say enough about them, and I'm sure that the police officers are pleased to work for such a great chief. We've got a good chief here, excellent chief. Thank you, we appreciate everything that you do. All right. We have the minutes from the, in your agenda package, from July twenty-fifth, council meeting draft minutes from August one, as well as the service delivery strategy mediation draft minutes from August the sixth. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Grant made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded the motion, that's the minutes of July twenty-fifth, August first, and August sixth. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. A ten-minute public input, we have a couple people, Ricky Atkins?
Mr. Atkins left. He asked me to strike his name from the left.
Oh, okay.
I can speak a little bit for his.
Okay.
Mr. Atkins lives across the street in, I think I got in the street now, but it's what we call Roosterville, over there, right across the street. We've had, he's called numerous times, and we seem to go over and do a little something, but never take care of his problem. He, he keeps calling me, 'cause he said, "At least I got somebody to come over there." But it's just the fact that he has limbs that are out in the road, he has leaves that never get vacuumed up enough, he says that the visibility is very poor, he's afraid someone's gonna have a real bad accident there. And so I know that Nathan had been over there, and some of the rest of you may have been, but he is very concerned, and what he asked me, and I said, "Well, the best way is for you come and address the council," and I guess something else came up, but.
Well, no, we, we had a discussion, the longworm's been over there this week, one of his concerns is about tree limbs, and, and we've gotta decide whose property the trees are actually on, if they're on the right-of-way, or if they're on Georgia Powers area out there. And so what we had discussed is that we would meet outside and look at it and see what exactly that issue is, and who might be responsible for those dead trees. And he said, "As long as we would do that," he didn't feel the need to speak tonight. He appreciated it, so.
Okay, that, yeah, well, I haven't been updated on that.
Sure.
While I was saying this also, I got a call yesterday from Kathy Johns, who, most of you know her, she worked for Billy Pastry, and still does. And she was almost hit, she said, three times in the last couple of weeks, coming from Archer into Jeanette. She said, "The house there on the corner has some, a lot of limbs and bushes and stuff, and you just can't hardly see." And she said, "Would I please bring that up to have someone check on that?"
Archer in Jarvis?
Archer in Jarvis.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Thomas Weaver.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at one-thirty-one Old Mary. There's three issues I'd like to bring to your attention, first of which is that councils should know and be made aware that I had a telephonic conversation with the mayor and office of the city clerk, petitioning the city clerk under our city code, chapter two, section eighty-six, paragraph A, for the inclusion and agendization of a matter regarding the locker policy for technical amendments and modification updates based on councils' discussions and deliberations during the budget that was previously adopted by council. As many of you may recall, that policy was adopted by yourselves last September, so I do believe we need to have consideration of that policy next month in light of my remarks for the inclusion of added storage locker space at the current Public Safety and Municipal Court complex. Secondly, tonight on the agenda, later during the council meeting, you are scheduled to deliberate amongst yourselves as to the finalization of the ordinance regarding the trucks there on Longview Street and Golf Course Road and other roads. And I've walked many of the roads over the years, and the way that the ordinance is worded, although I'm not, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, but it does say over six wheels or tires. And some of the larger trucks, like box trucks and some other rental vehicles, can have six tires and still would be allowed to use those roads and those larger trucks, so I just ask for you to take that in consideration as to the, as to the legalese and the verbiage there, as to whether or not you want to be inclusive of those types of vehicles also or not. That's a policy choice you have to make, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But lastly, on a much lighter note, I'm looking forward to seeing many of you and also meeting with Splashy Saturday in the park over there at a Wall River Park. I too have purchased a rubber duck, and hopefully, with a little bit of luck and God willing, my duck will cruise on into, to a, to a cool finish there, and I'll be able to float over the winner's circle and secure a little cash prize. But regardless, I'm looking forward to the fun, and it's all for charity, so it's going to be a good event. I look to see you there, Splashy and all.
Okay. Thanks, Thomas, appreciate it. Okay. Under old business, discussion of possible action of proposed changes to the City of Canton Code of Ordinances, chapter eighteen, article two, occupation tax.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You have a copy, a draft of the corrected chapter on occupational tax. Once again, this is just to implement the changes that were adopted a few months back when we did the sick to nakes conversion. So if y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them as it directly relates to the changes of the ordinance.
What do you see as the net change to the cost?
As we mentioned, this first phase?
Yeah.
We tried to make it as neutral as possible. There were just, literally just a few entities that would have been impacted, but we tried to make it as neutral to all businesses possible. Now, the phase two that we're gonna come back to, we're gonna, you know, entertain if there are any other changes as far as the ratios, the gross receipts ratios, that we have to change to become compliant with law. I think there's a few of those that we have to deal with. Right now, there's virtually no changes to the.
Okay.
Tax rate. This is just to get us from sick to nakes to north.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Grant made the motion, I believe Ms. Wilson seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, discussion of possible action of annual Georgia DOT list of roads. Chief Mitchell?
I don't have any comments on it, if you don't have any questions.
The only question, I wanted to make sure of now, the, the one on the interstate going from sixty-five to seventy.
Seventy, yes.
Are they leaving out, except for the curves, is that what I understand?
Still be fifty-five with the caution lights. It'll remain the same.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's been a bad, that's been a bad place there, hasn't it, for wrecks?
Yes, sir. It's gotten a little better, but as soon as I say that, I don't wanna, I definitely don't wanna jinx it. I don't wanna jinx it, so.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Thank you.
Entertaining mo, oh, no, what?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Haste has made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded the motion to approve the annual G dot list of roads. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Okay. Mr. Pepper, discussion of possible action of the amendment to the truck route ordinance.
One item I would mention that needs to be clarified in what you have before you, after Marietta Highway, we need to specify in the ordinance that that's between Herndon Lane and exit fourteen. So we would not be able to, to limit access in there. With regard to the concern that was brought up about vehicles over six wheels, the city's not allowed to weigh vehicles. So ultimately, the only decision that we have is how many axles a vehicle has, the number of wheels a vehicle has, or the weight of a vehicle. And so if we can't weigh a vehicle, then that, that becomes problematic. I believe the six wheels was, over six wheels was placed in there because you, you could technically have an oversized passenger vehicle, a duly truck or something like that, that has, that has six wheels. And so that was initially, Mr. Dyer and I were talking about that, that's, that's probably the basis why it's over six wheels, is that you can still have some, some passenger vehicles with six wheels. Yes, ma'am?
This is a moot point, I'm sure. How many wheels does a school bus have?
So, school bus would be exempt.
Exempt, right.
The, the way the current ordinance is, is read, governmental vehicles that are doing routes through the area, transit vehicles, they're exempt, public safety vehicles are exempt, vehicles that are doing maintenance of the roadways or doing construction in the area are exempt, vehicles that have business in the area, whether it's a delivery or a pickup, those are exempt. For instance, if somebody's moving into a house in the area, moving into a business in the area, they hire a moving company, as long as they're doing business within that area, they would be exempt. The only vehicles that would not be exempt and would be restricted are those that are purely using those routes to pass through.
Any other questions? Mr. Grant?
And just to confirm that the Northside Parkway is on there, the hospital?
That's correct. That's correct.
Now, is this, is this, did you, did you indicate to me you wanted to kinda hold up on this one, or?
Well.
Is there a reason to do that?
If council would like for us to bring it back the next month with that clarification on Marietta Highway, we can, but, I mean, if, if y'all are fine to move forward with it, we could just make that clarification as part of the motion, let's sign it.
Explain that clarification again.
So, the city controls Marietta Highway from Herndon Lane.
Yes.
South to exit fourteen.
Yes.
And so we would specify in the ordinance when we say Marietta Highway, that particular stretch of Marietta Highway. It would not impact Marietta Highway from Herndon Lane over to, to Riverstone, because that's state, state maintained. And we can't control access on state routes.
Okay. But we can enforce speeding on it, right?
We can enforce speed on it based on their speed limits.
On their speed limits?
That's correct.
I move to approve with the condition.
Second motion.
Okay, Ms. Wilson made a motion to approve. Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other questions or comments or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to commend, Mr. Swindell is here tonight, he's one of the people that brought this to my attention, particularly over on Northside, the Hospital Road on Northside Hospital. So, thank you, Mr. Swindell, for your.
I'd had some complaints about.
Being a good citizen.
Yeah, I'd had some complaints about Golf Course Road and coming down Longview, a couple of calls on that.
And, and, and just so everybody's aware, we'll have to post signs on the roadways, and then we'll have a period of thirty days after signs are posted before we could do any enforcement. It's not something that's gonna occur overnight, it's gonna take us some time to get all that worked out.
Sure. Let's see, discussion of possible action of selling parcel ninety-one N sixteen oh sixty-eight by sealed bids.
If you recall, at the last meeting, we discussed this, there's a, there's a, there's a parcel adjacent to the city's property at one-fifty-one Elizabeth Street, that's actually a West Marietta Street address, it's point zero eight acres. There's really not anything the city has a use for that particular property. There is, there is some discussion about some development in that area, and so if the city doesn't have a use for it, it may be better utilized by the private sector to put it back on the tax rolls. And so what we would do is come to council and suggest that, that be the option. I believe Mr. Dyer has a couple of comments on that process.
I learned, by looking at the packet of information, that the lot may be less than a, our minimum size for a usable lot. If, if that is true, we don't have to do sealed bids. We are allowed to offer the property to an abutting property owner. The statute says you have to offer it to all abutting property owners, where there's only one that's not the city. So you would, you could determine a price and offer it without having to go to bids.
I'd rather go, I think it makes sense to go to bid, and I also would recommend that we have an appraisal on the property to make sure we're, you know, getting a reasonable price for it and not selling it too cheap. But that, that's just me, I think that it sort of protects, it protects people when you, when you do that, when you have an appraisal in hand, and this is what it is, you know. I mean, you know, my cousin might come up and want to bid on it, and if we don't have an appraisal and sell it, sell it a lot cheaper than what it would really appraise for, it'd look kinda bad, I think.
And you, and you don't have to accept the bids. We are allowed to reject all bids. So if you did a bid, my thinking would be this, which is, if there's a price you know is your minimum price, don't bid it, just offer it to him at that price. I mean, you could try, but then you're gonna reject all bids, and you, if it doesn't get that, and you're gonna be back to.
You could do that.
You're back to just starting over because somebody was trying to get it cheap.
So ultimately.
So really, you just have to decide your price, I think, and then we can decide what to do.
So ultimately, I think what that suggestion is, is that we could have an appraisal done, and we could offer it to that adjacent property owner to pay the price of the appraisal, or a price that you agree to based off that appraisal, since it falls within that threshold of being an unbuildable, unusable lot on its own.
What is the downside of, of taking sealed bids?
Time. I mean, just going through the process, because you're gonna, if you're gonna reject it, if it doesn't get a certain amount of money, then you've gone through that process. I mean, there's, on the assumption that there's not gonna be a whole lot of bidders.
I wouldn't assume.
For an unusable piece of property, it's probably just gonna be that guy, the, the abutting property owner, and he's not gonna know what to bid, so he's gonna try to get it cheap. And if you said, "Well, we're gonna reject that bid," you're ending up really just sort of telling him what you want, so. If you're willing to sell it for whatever bid you get, then sure, I mean, that's the fairest way to do it.
Mr. Grant?
Don't we have a, a value from the Cherokee County tax appraisal on it?
What, one of the issues with that is that the property is a non-taxed property, and so if you look at the parcel information, Cherokee County's assessor has that listed fifty thousand dollars of value. Well, the adjacent property, which is more than twice the size of our property, is listed at twenty thousand of land value, so.
We'll take fifty.
That's, that's the reason you need an actual appraisal, in my opinion, on there, is because you got, you got two different things out there, what is it really?
And, and that's why.
Not fifty.
Well.
I mean, if, if it's point zero eight acres, if that's true, which is what the deed says, I mean, that, nobody's gonna pay you fifty thousand dollars for point zero eight acres, are they?
And so, so I think what this.
Uh, it's a CBD, Central Business District property, or not?
Yeah, but that's saying land's worth five-hundred thousand dollars an acre in downtown? Is that true?
Uh, so I think. It's a lot closer to that than you think. So I think from that scenario.
Actually, it's more than five-hundred thousand, 'cause it's point zero eight, it's not even point one. So you'd be talking five million an acre at point zero.
But you gotta think, what are the setbacks in that zone, and I don't know, you know, probably none.
There are none, I think it's zero lot lands, yeah.
I think what Mr. Dyer's saying is, we could get an appraisal and act off of an appraisal as opposed to going through a bid process, if you would like, and that way you know you're at least getting what the property appraises for.
I mean, I'd, I'd imagine it's point zero eight acres, I mean, that'd be nice to have a survey too, but now you spend a lot of money just to get whatever it's worth from somebody.
See, that's almost a four-thousand-square-foot lot.
That'd be a tenth of an acre, right?
And, huh?
That's a tenth of an acre, so it's almost, yeah, almost four-thousand.
Pushing a tenth of an acre, if it's point oh eight.
It's about thirty-four hundred square feet.
Yeah.
I think we also have to consider the value to the city of having that lot developed nicely and the property next to it, which is, could be vastly improved, and some value in that, I'm not saying to take less than it's worth, certainly, but.
But hey, you know what it's worth.
Yeah.
If you don't have an appraisal.
Sounds like getting an appraisal is the first step.
I think that's the first step, let's do that, that'd be, be my suggestion, anyway.
And, and we come back and decide what to do then.
Yeah, I, I, 'cause I think you'll, you'll certainly recoup your cost of the appraisal, for sure, you know.
You don't have to get a full appraisal report.
Well, it should just be a form report, I would think.
We don't need a full packet.
No, you don't need a narrative for that, no.
So we'll go get an appraisal.
Okay, that's good.
A couple of items I wanted to mention in my report. First of all, as you're aware, we have an, an outstanding RFP process on the Jones Building. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on that last week. We had about thirty people show up for that, that also took a tour of the facility, about thirty. Now, of those thirty, there might have been multiple people with the same group, and we may not get proposals from everybody, but it was a pretty good turnout for that particular event. A few questions were asked, we, we've posted more information online about that. Those proposals are due on the twenty-eighth, and so we'll know a little bit more after that time. On the parking deck, based on the direction of council at the last meeting, I sent an email out to Mr. Harris and asked him if we could set up a meeting at time to discuss what his proposal is on his. what his proposal is on his facility. Haven't received back any indication of when he wants to meet. So as soon as we do that, we'll, we'll get some information back to you on that. We do have an ethics training scheduled for the council on Monday, starting at nine o'clock here in this room. Mr. Eric Robinson with the Carl Vinson Institute of Government will be providing that training here. Lots of weekend activities. Mr. Weaver mentioned, we've got the duck race going on on Saturday, but we also have Friday night, we've got a concert over here at Brown Park. The band that was going to be doing our first Friday in July when we had the rain is rescheduled, so they'll be out at Brown Park tomorrow night at six o'clock Saturday. Bring your bibs because it's watermelon eating contest at the farmer's market, if you would like to get involved with that. And then, of course, we have our last of our four summer concerts out at Edgewall River Park with the Kentucky Headhunters on Saturday night. The only other thing I have to mention tonight, we, we are going to be looking at adding some additional holiday decorations downtown this year. As you know, we finished our, our tree lighting project downtown as we've lit the trees with white lights through downtown. One of the things that the Main Street Board had, had mentioned that they would like to consider is a larger Christmas tree downtown. And so we have a proposal for that and the fees associated with that. Also, we're looking at doing some strand lighting across North Street where we already have a connection between two poles. If you recall the old pictures where we used to do the lighting across the street, we're going to start out on North Street this year. And speaking with Mr. Ingram, we have the funds available in the hotel, hotel tax to be able to do that. And so the cost of the tree is right at fourteen thousand dollars. It's a twenty-four foot tree. It comes in rings so that it can be expanded in future years if you want to go taller with it. We assemble it. It's got a five-year warranty on all the parts of the tree. And so again, that would come out of the hotel tax. And then they're also going to be replacing the garland that we put up on the gazebo as part of that. So it's probably going to be in the twenty thousand dollar range all totaled, but again, all of that come out of the hotel tax and all of it would be used for many years to come. So that would come to you in the form of a budget amendment at the end of the year, since we're so close to the end of the year.
Anything else?
Y'all have anything for me? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to thank Mr. Dodson, who's here, for his hard work organizing the concerts and keeping the parks nice. Nicely done. Thank you.
The concerts have been very well received this year. Adam's done a great job in getting those set up for us. I think our sponsors have been very happy with the turnout. It's, it's very interesting to hear the people at the concerts. A lot of them are coming to our concerts, they've been to other concerts in cities around us and they talk about how easy it is to get in and get out and, you know, what a great venue Edgewall River Park is. So I think it's been a great opportunity to showcase that.
Okay. Thank you, Billy. Appreciate that.
Okay, the mayor's report, I only have the two items, nomination of Rick Zenett to the Planning Commission. He's from Soleil, computer, he's been retired about three years, so he has a lot of time. He's wanting to get involved in the community. He would have been here tonight, but his wife, he, he says, is, is running for a spot on the HOA board in Soleil, so he wanted to be there, I guess, and cast a vote for that, so. But anyway, that doesn't need a second, just a motion if, if you would care to make a motion to approve him. He's replacing the term, which quite honestly ends in December the thirty-first. It's Carol Day's term, so technically only be here on for a few months unless he's reappointed at that time.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, thank you.
And also, in view of the fact that, I guess this is probably, maybe Bill's last scheduled council meeting, scheduled, I guess it would be, you know, could, there could be something in between now and next week, but kind of doubt it. So we do not want the, to go without a mayor pro tem, so I have, I'm nominating Ferris to, to serve in that capacity and I'll entertain a motion to approve him as the mayor pro tem effective immediately.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Goodman made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'll leave something out.
Don't forget the town hall.
Oh, that's right. And that is, what is that? Tuesday?
Tuesday, the twentieth.
Tuesday, the twentieth at what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. And it's going to be?
Chattahoochee Tech, Canton County.
Chattahoochee Tech, up in the bluffs there, so.
I'm sorry.
If you've got any beefs, if you've got any comments, if you want to do anything as far as what the city's doing and help shape the direction of the city, show up. Make your comments.
Mayor.
Okay? I'm sorry, Jack?
I want to just bring up, I know that I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago and it just, we talked about it a little bit, nothing ever happened, but I would like to see this go on the agenda. The, they've had several deaths lately on these scooters and I really feel that Canton needs to go ahead and decide whether we are going to approve those or not, but in my opinion, we don't need to approve them because all they've had is bad news on those things. Every week or two, we've got deaths all around us. Several cities have already said they are not going to have them in their cities. So I'd like to see that be put on the agenda.
Boy, you went that on our September work session discussion? Okay.
Something else I'd like to see is I'd like to see us have some signs up that say no smoking in the City of Canton, because everyone on this council, except for Mr. Hestes, voted for that, to have no smoking. I know we have some bricks, but that, I, I have people all the time say, I don't ever see a sign saying that. And I have had five calls this week saying, I'm tired of having cigarette butts all over my street, right in front of my store. And, you know, you guys voted for it. It's best for our citizens and we want signs put up. So that, I'm just, I'm just bringing the message to you. I'm the messenger. So I'd like to see that done.
Okay. Now, we got bricks in the sidewalk, right?
But they aren't, that's, people say, I'm not walking around looking down, I'm looking out. And I want to see a sign because they say that these people that are, they've approached about that, say, we don't see any signs. And I kind of halfway agree, really, just to be honest with you. We really need a visual sign.
So my question to you is, do you want us to start with downtown?
Yes.
Because the ordinance is all public sidewalks.
I agree.
So do you want to start downtown with signs or you want us to hit everywhere where it's currently in the ordinance?
Well, I'd start down here and move everywhere it's governed the ordinance, I think. But we all voted for it, except for Mr. Hestes.
Okay, all right. The only other thing I would, I would mention before we adjourn the executive session is that the, remind everybody about the qualifying, starting Monday and going through noon on Wednesday. So if you ever had, you know, that desire to get involved, you know, and, and you may have, may have a, what I have said many times is I had a momentary lapse of good judgment a few years ago and ended up running, but I thoroughly have enjoyed it. That's, that's supposed to be a joke, but not a good one. But you, you can still vote in that election. You can register as late, I understand, is October the seventh and, and that's like thirty days prior, so if you know people that want to get involved and, and participate in the election, let them know about the, the election. Let them know that the, they can register up till October the seventh and still vote in the November fifth election.
Mr. Grant?
I did want to say, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to serve as mayor pro tem for the past five and a half years. It was an honor and a privilege and thoroughly enjoyed it.
I, I appreciate you serving as well, believe me. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session to discuss litigation and we will not be coming back out for any vote.
So moved.